Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the signed ice session of the governing body for January 6, 2025. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Aldrich.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
Present.
Mr. Cook.
For the last time, yes.
Mr. Escobal.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Laborn.
Here.
Dr. Rennie.
Present.
Mr. Royball.
Present.
Mr. Seagrave.
Present.
All members are present. We do have a mayor, a quorum.
You do have a mayor.
We do have a mayor.
Will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I have two.
Ceremonial resolution and recognition of the Honorable Brian Cook for his dedication and outstanding contributions to the City of Cheyenne and its residents.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Seagrave and seconded by Dr. Aldrich. Before we go to the vote, though, I just have a couple of words that I would like to say about Mr. Cook. I served as a War II city councilman for 12 years, and Mr. Cook is following and serving his 12 years as a War II city councilman. And I feel pretty big kinship with him for our shared service to our ward and our residents. I asked a few people about Brian, and the words they shared with me show how much he's respected. Compassion, caring, kind, and thoughtful were just a few of those words that were shared with me. His passion for his nonprofit career and the residents of War II show in his actions every day. That responsive niche and passion was a big part of him receiving the most votes each time in his contested elections. That and the fact that he knows more people than anyone else I know. You can hear that during CFD parades when Brian's name is hollered more than any other. Brian's support of youth recreational opportunities has been evident through his 12 years on the governing body. He understands how sporting facilities help kids understand teamwork, build confidence, develop lifelong friendships, and promote just so dang much fun. Brian has been a huge supporter of improving the quality of life in our community. I know Brian is so proud of his support of our efforts to support housing, the 17th Street lighting project, the trails on the Bellbor Ranch, and our efforts to clean up the hitching post. Brian is a gentle giant whose career helping people doesn't match his physical appearance. Dr. Aldrich shared how he always was there to help her get in and out of her CFD carriage that's always too tall for vertically challenged Ward III councilwoman. Brian and Marie share the same anniversary as Dr. Rennie and I, August 28, and we admire his devotion to his wife and his kids, and how that devotion carried over to his time in office and the responsive way he helped the residents and constituents of War II. We understand Brian deciding to retire from his service to our community and wish him well in his new job and his travels to watch his son play soccer in the most southern part of our beautiful country. Brian, thank you so much for your service to your residents and our city. Thank you. Sir, do you have anything you'd like to say? I think that says it all.
Yeah, not quite. I just want to thank want to thank my family. And damn, I didn't think this was going to be this hard, but I've enjoyed this. You know, you're always going to have regrets. There's always things that you're going to wish you could have done better. But I've enjoyed this. I appreciate the support of the people who have supported me and voted for me for the last 12 years. I've really tried to do well by you. I hope I have, but you know, history will be the judge of that. You know, my family has sacrificed a lot over the last 12 years. But, you know, I've enjoyed this. I want to thank Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you. I want to thank your staff. You know, contrary to popular belief, I'm not always the most cuddly person to get along with. You know, just again, just ask my family. They'll tell you that. I can be somewhat arrogant at times, but I would also like to think that, like you said, I'm compassionate. I'm passionate. You can ask Jeff White, I'm brutally honest. I am very, very, very sarcastic, but I'm fiercely loyal. And I will always be loyal to the City of Cheyenne, not only to the residents of War II who elected me, but I have always, I've always believed it wasn't only my job to represent them, but to represent everybody in all three wards of the city. I think that's the way it should be done. So I appreciate all the kind words. I look forward to seeing what, what the next four years will hold. I've enjoyed serving with this council. I just thank you. Thank, thank everyone. Thank those of you who could be here. I thank my family for being here, my mom for being here, some close friends of ours. I just really appreciate your support over the last 12 years. What a long, strange trip it's been. Thank you.
I didn't know if anybody in the governing body wanted to share anything. Okay. Mr. Cook, we have a couple of things for you here. I suppose we get to vote on this resolution, don't we? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you. Next item, please.
Ceremonial resolution and recognition of the Honorable Richard Johnson for his dedication and outstanding contributions to the City of Cheyenne and its residents.
I would love to have a motion for this one also.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Aldrich and seconded by Mr. White. And again, before we go on, I just have a few words I'd like to say. And I wrote down, and then comes Mr. Johnson. I love the story of the first time Councilman Jeff White met Richard. Jeff was interviewing to replace Councilman Jimmy Valdez, who had recently passed away. As he came into the council office, he was met by a person in torn jeans, unlaced tennis shoes, and wearing a Judas Priest, a Judas Priest t-shirt. He assured Jeff the council interview would go well, and he wished him luck. Jeff asked the council assistant, who was that? And Chris answered, if you're selected, that will be your Ward III colleague, Mr. Johnson. Jeff was selected. It was the beginning of a great friendship. And this is the contradiction. Richard's outside appearance versus the hardest working councilman who has spent his life working to make our community a better place. Think about his work on the spray pad in the Depot Plaza, the Vernon Baker bronze, and his support for the military. The words shared about Roger, Richard include brilliant, hardworking, scruffy, relentless, a great fundraiser, and Councilman Moonbeam. And you're going to have to, this last one's kind of a funny story you'll have to get from Dr. Rennie at a different time. Richard's spent a lot of time digging into our city code books, and he authored numerous ordinances to clean up antiquated or poorly written provisions. Rumor is he only sleeps a few hours a night and spends the remainder of the time researching our codes and looking at other communities who may have a better way that we could adopt. He's the reason we rewrote Title VI and Title 13 in City Code. During his nocturnal readings, he came across a biased crimes ordinance in Tulsa that became the most important piece of legislation, legislation he wrote in our governing body passed. I love having Richard on the city council. He represents a group of people many of us don't get to talk to on a regular basis, and that makes our governing body stronger. I know he's leaving our city council, but I also know he won't stop working to make our community better. Richard, thank you so much for your service to our city and to its residents. Your turn, sir.
And as usual, guess what? I came prepared. Anything that the council has ever said about me up here is they're like, you come into anything you take on absolutely prepared, thinking of backwards, sideways, reversed, whatever, that I try to put every variable into anything I bring forward so that I know what I'm doing. And that's why, I mean, John Brody, Stephanie Boster, Dan White, Sylvia Hackel, and all them, I became either one of their staunchest enemies, or they finally found out that I wasn't as dumb as I look. So I started actually writing my own stuff, which is what I did today. So when it comes down to it, I've thought about the way that I view the City of Cheyenne, especially over the last campaign season, and it really was that if you, anybody knows Cheyenne history, it's called the Magic City of the Plains. And that really, the way that it's not like a magician came and, you know, cast an evil spell, which actually makes a lot of sense now, but really, it kind of popped up out of nowhere. And so it was called the Magic City because what didn't exist now existed. And so I viewed that the magic was kind of out of the community. I've kind of watched over the last four years as things that I was into, like the arts and humanities and things like that, that a lot of the people that supported me have actually either passed away or moved out of the city. And so my base actually left. They were either sick of it so much that they died, or they moved out of town. And so I told my friend this morning that I was going to take her advice and say that this was Richard Johnson's pity party, party of one. So, any of you that know what a compliment sandwich is, that's where my speech is going to go. No, I'm not going to really throw the proverbial grenades, as everybody thought. It's Stephanie Boster's going away party. They were real worried about what I was going to say today. You weren't worried. You weren't even there, so no wonder you didn't worry. So anyways, so I go back to like what happened in 2020 and the things that have happened in a city that actually inspired me to rerun back in the pandemic, was the fact that I put together 45 bands, you know, pretty, or actually, it was 30 bands in a virtual concert series that brought hope into a community that literally was lacking in the pandemic. And I asked all these people just to perform from their couches doing Facebook Lives, and the amount of people that it touched during a super hard time was, you know, amazing. And so I looked at things that have happened even in 2024, and the magic was gone. Like, even in back in the 150th anniversary, I put together a three-disc compilation for the Cheyenne Youth Symphony with, that had 45 bands that literally were all local, all original material. And so that magic had kind of went away, you know, the people that I used to support, or that supported me had all moved on. As the mayor alluded, I've, it's weird to think about this, but I've been involved in fundraising for up to $3 million in improvements in Cheyenne, whether that be the splash pad, the skate park, the Universal Playground, the Vernon Baker Sculpture, all these different things that I like put my mind to that all of a sudden happens. Then I go back to my first actual, I didn't talk pretty much, which surprises you, I didn't really talk in 2015 all that much. I told the assistant at the time that I wanted to learn how the clock worked, so then I could come break it and put it back together again in my own image. And that's exactly what I did, up until about August of 2015, when I stood in front of 60 angry constituents, and told them that the bike lanes were coming through, that we actually had a contract already signed. And that did not make people happy. It was actually my first fire and brimstone and pitchfork moment where I stood in front of 60 angry constituents that I didn't even live in their neighborhood. And it was the first time, and it felt amazing, that I was told to go away. They actually called around many city departments and said, we want him fired. No city employee should be able to talk to the community that way. And Nathan Bohheim, who happened to be the city engineer at the time, told them, well, they're going to have to contact the voters of Ward III if they want him fired. Going on of why I'm just like so jaded in regards to even my role up here anymore is like, just a discourtesy of how constituents actually treat you. And I get it. I've brought up nearly every controversial topic over the last 10 years. And so, you know, but it's, the lack of respect really got to me, especially when my girlfriend and I were celebrating her birthday down in Denver, and I get a text from an ex-girlfriend that tells me how to vote on an off-track betting site at Tusker's. Really, an email would have sufficed. That's just the type of courtesy that I get. And then the fact that people actually go out and tell her that maybe she should have left money on the cabinet for me because I, they thought that I drafted a law about oversized vehicles because she unfortunately got in a wreck, and they held her accountable and said I was not listening to my constituents, and I was writing an ordinance to, you know, show the city that I had a vendetta against them, and I was going to take them out, you know, by just supporting her. Complete bullshit. Sorry, Mayor, point of order on that one. But then you got to think about, when I listen to, or when I see text message beams with notifications, and I got called after the human rights ordinance, we're 185 days straight. I got told I was Hitler. Now, think of that. You know, I get it. I've worked with tons of staff, and I know you get, get tons of emails, but to be called Hitler after a human rights ordinance for 185 straight days, yeah, kind of wears on you. And then it was funny, during the campaign, people would come up and tell me that I was from California. And I'm like, yeah, Wyoming tattooed on my arm. Like, how much more I was born here. It's like, I ask people that move in, the COVID refugees, I was like, go back to Bain's yearbook, go back to Johnson's yearbook, go back to East yearbook, where are you at? I was born and raised here, but for some reason, because of the way I think, it was, looked like I was more progressive than I was from California or Colorado, and I wasn't supposed to Colorado, there Wyoming, even though they moved here three years ago. Made no damn sense to me. So it goes into this comment that I read from Ten Sleep, and he actually said, he goes, I have no problems with the COVID refugees, but he goes, if you were that passionate about politics, why didn't you stay where you were at and actually improve your own damn community? So, when it goes, I mean, I can listen to all the comments where they come up here, hearing about, if I have to hear one more time, that's another reason I'm really happy I'm leaving, is hearing the last bastion of freedom, I'm as your boss in my emails. Thank God, I never have to hear that again. And then, when people ask me, they're like, Richard, do you have a chance of actually winning this election? And I was like, no. And they're like, why not? And I was like, because 21,000 people shared a post about Cobras on I-25. These people vote, and they share about Cobras on the interstate. I was like, that's what I'm dealing with. So of course I was going to lose. And then Cook and I have talked about it, you know, about property tax and direct distributions, and the millions of dollars that this city is going to face economically over the next four years, or even longer, and it's the way that the legislature is currently going to work, that it's going to be a vote via text message from back east than it is actually representing their constituencies. Yeah, good, I'm glad I'm gone. Then you got to think about the time that goes into it. Firefighter negotiations, work sessions, committees, boards, meetings, coffee and council, all this stuff like is now freed up that I don't have to attend these anymore. You know, and then it's funny, people say, hey, Richard, are you going to come back and serve the city? I can't even get on a city board. And I really just see in the next four years, there's not going to be a lot of changes that are going on in Cheyenne. The voters have spoken, and they really would like Cheyenne to go back to a nice, quieter 1950s motif, and I'm not about that. Then I would talk about effective politics. I learned, I've studied, you know, and Mayor Collins and I've talked about James Madison stuff, and I've talked with Judge Jeffrey about Madison and Monroe, about effective politicking. So it's funny, like, I bring forth backyard chickens. At the same time, I repealed 12 other ordinances. Everybody was so focused on chickens that they didn't pay attention to what I was doing behind the scenes. You can see the same thing with the UDC made massive, massive amounts of changes I couldn't sponsor because my name was being dragged through the mud for plastic bags and cannabis. And then even more recently, the stormwater utility, everyone's like, this one's going to really hit hard in January of 26, and I hit them with downtown parking and oversized vehicles that nobody even paid attention to what I was doing. And then social media is another thing that I've taken. Anyone that knows me from my first term did the You Have Failed This City. I basically spoon-fed everybody what was going on at City Hall, and then I realized that the community and the voters really didn't know how to read a city agenda, and so I quit doing it. I realized also when people would comment on my threads, that they weren't willing to make any donations to projects to actually improve our community. Every single time it was, I'm on hard times, I'm broke, I had, you know, emergency surgery, like, all these people that spent all their time on social media really were just bitching and not actually contributing to their community, and that was extremely frustrating. And so I kind of quit spoon-feeding them and was like, you know how to read an agenda, you know, and so I started writing op-eds to the Tribune Eagle about what I was going to do before. And I have to give, you know, even though Michelle says I was his co-host for a long time, I have to give Doug at K-GAB the, really, a big thank you that he let me actually, anytime I brought something forward, he was always willing to extend an olive branch to me to say, come in and speak about what you're doing as a councilman. So I do really appreciate him. As I kind of stated earlier, my base went away. In 2021 alone, I lost 31 people that, you know, either made it through the pandemic, but I just couldn't believe that it was almost one person a week that was dying, you know, that I knew. Redistricting didn't help. I looked at the redistricting, and I knew, yeah, the places I was both solidly represented, I was no longer part of that. And so pretty much everyone was gone. As I stated with the compliment sandwich, I am, as Brian has stated, you know, this council has been, we've all said it, that this is one of the most proactive councils that I've ever served on, you know, I, at least we didn't have to spend, you know, what, almost 25 weeks debating about the Civic Center Commons across the street, which was just tedious and, you know, minutia at that point. So each of you, I wanted to actually end with positive notes that I didn't want to throw as many grenades as I told you about. To Councilman Jeff White, this guy, as stated, you know, it wasn't Judas Priest. I don't know where he got that. I don't even own a Judas Priest shirt now, but I'm sure if it was maybe Skeleton Witch, or Goat Whore, or something like that, maybe. But I don't own a Judas Priest shirt. So, so, but I have to give Jeff, like, mad accolades, even up to most recently with the last Rudy in Cheyenne planning. Jeff had to go on K-GAB and do his campaign spiel, and, and I'm calling him at nine o'clock in the morning, telling him, hey, I need somebody that's actually done this before. My team's all new volunteers, so he, you know, came, he came and helped me dig trees. I told him, I was like, you have a face for radio anyway, so no one's going to care how you look, so get down here and help me. So Jeff, his always, like, whether it be trash cleanups, or just anything, like, I always like text Jeff, and I'm like, hey, do you want to come help me with this? And he's always been there unless, you know, obviously with his daughter's graduation and things like that, you know, family came first, which I understood that he couldn't help me sometimes, but he did come and help me tremendously. Councilman Pete Laborn, this one's so fun. Everybody would think that Pete and I do not get along, and it, it's weird how it resonates to the community that you would think that Pete and I aren't friends. Pete and I have actually successfully done a lot of really good stuff together, and we're so damn direct. Yes, it does get a little hostile sometimes because our personalities are just that way. But you got to look at when we improved upon downtown trees, when he brought the ordinance forward for the downtown splash pad. Even recently, we worked in regards to downtown sidewalks with the DDA to improve things around the Mort's Bagels, which I saw on socials that it looked like that was going forward. And then, no disrespect to Pete, but I think I have the record for the most briefcase slams in my face, arms crossed and walking out the door. So I think I actually hold that, and I just got one more. To Michelle, my Zonta arch-nemesis. This one actually came from Michelle when she spoke at a Zonta thing we were at, and she said, Richard Johnson is my arch-nemesis. And people thought she was actually serious. And she's also, I mean, if you believe social media, that I'm just a drunk that doesn't know how to comb my hair and shows no respect for anything, all true, that Michelle's my actually designated driver. I hope you're available at 3 o'clock this afternoon. And she's also my forever no vote. Whenever I would bring something forward, Michelle would vote no, with the exception of oversized vehicles and some of the stuff we did recently with the board, for the three and a half, or pretty much four years that Michelle and I served, you could guarantee that Michelle was going to be a no vote on everything I brought forward. Then to Ken, or I was trying to remember where everyone sat, but I guess I got wrong. So Ken, yeah, I'll get back to Mark in a minute. Ken, Ken is my advocate. And it's crazy, because like, when Ken and I met, it was when I got sworn in, and he seemed like a swarmy legislator to me. And so I was like, ugh, I don't know about this one. But Ken and I actually became really good friends, and he became a huge advocate for me. And one of them goes back to the human rights ordinance, where Ken actually told me he was going to go talk to Councilman Seagrave about the human rights ordinance, and when he brought forth, like, the experiences that he had in Cheyenne in regards to, you know, racial discrimination and things like that, like, that's when Ken and I really hit it off, that we became actually friends and talked about different things. And the best thing about Ken is, we don't usually talk too much about city politics. We more or less talk about like trips to Mexico and things like that. We're, it's more of a friendship basis than, you know, always like in the mud, you know, dealing with city crap. Then, okay, so we'll go to Mark. Mark is probably one of the most intelligent individuals that I've ever met. I mean, he brings logic, so much so, that I got compared to Mark, because I guess I became so logical that they were going to classify me as vanilla, that I lost my spark. And so it's so funny, but I would took it as an exact, or a very, very good compliment, that Mark and I actually met when we first got here by playing 2,000 games of trivia crack. And that was back in 2015. And I, out of like 2,000 games, I won 10% of them. And so that shows you the genius of Dr. Rennie. He came back after skateboarding failed, and he re-brought it back to allow skateboarding in certain areas of the downtown. And then it was so funny, on the final vote, I was in Cartagena, Colombia, so I couldn't even vote on my own ordinance. So that just shows you the power of Dr. Rennie, like, you know, listening to not only his constituents, but also to his co-councilors, and, and really bringing it forward. And he has taken a huge amount of time with me over the 10 years, and he still tries to on Friday, but Friday was an absolute failure for him. But he has been a great mentor to me in regards to how I draft things, how I execute things, how I, you know, present things and everything to the community as well as to governing body. And he has by far been a fantastic mentor to me. So I really do want to tell you, thank you for that. And then the fact that, it's funny, going into every campaign forum, the word moonbeam comes from Jerry Brown. And so anybody that may know the California governor at that time, he was called Moonbeam. Well, there's a song by the Dead Kennedys called California Uber Alice that sings about Jerry Brown. And so to hype myself up for campaigning, I would actually listen to Kill, 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 Kill the Poor by the Dead Kennedys in order to hype myself up, because I was like, I'm going into a forum with a bunch of rich a-holes, and so I'm going to literally take myself down to Dead Kennedys level. So I did, and that's another reason I probably lost. Scott Roybal. I can drink him under the table. I'm sorry. But Scott Roybal, my forever co-sponsor. It started once again with backyard chickens, and Scott was like, Richard, if you bring chickens forward, count me in. And then that was the beginning of our, like, it goes back to Pete's pizza days where he wanted to race me to his house and then got a free delivery, but he was a city councilman. So I told him the cops would let him run the red lights where I'd get stopped, so that wasn't fair to do it. Yeah, you used me to get out of a speeding, or, no, he was on the, he was on his cell phone and got pulled over for being on his cell phone. So yes, it is enforced. Scott's excuse to the police officer was that he was on the phone with city councilman Richard Johnson, and that got him a get out of jail free card. And I'm like, you're a city councilman. He goes, yeah, but they don't know me. I mean, yeah, this kid appear like backroom politics like crazy, but no, this guy has literally co-sponsored nearly everything that I've brought forward. He's always been super solid behind whatever initiatives I have brought forward, where he's like, I'd explain what I was doing, and he, he has. And then Mayor Collins, if anybody wonders why I am the way I am, it's Patrick Collins. And this goes back to when I was 15 and he was 28. And so I really wanted to skateboard contest back when I was in high school, and Patrick happened to be the manager of Recycled Cycles. And so as 15-year-old Richard time was, you know, fleeting, and so Patrick's like, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. And so all of a sudden, I was sick of waiting, so I did it myself, which, when a eight-year-old kid called the Recycles, or Recycled Cycles, and accused Patrick that the judges didn't, showed favoritism to another kid, and he was like, well, who would hold a skateboard contest but me? And the answer was me. And so throughout our, our years, you know, we've, with our mutual friend Clay Sturman, who passed away in, in 2000, and just throughout, just our, because we're so different personalities, but in 2021, or 2020, when we did the Straw Pull Dinner, Patrick and I did a pinky swear that we would keep each other's names out of each other's mouths. Like, it was just like, it's like, we're here to represent our city. We're not here to bring our grudges with us, you know, from more of my grudge, you know, for the last 30 years. So it's like, we got to figure out a way to work together. And so far, we absolutely have. But he's also the one that's responsible for my do-it-yourself attitude, because he pushed me to have the confidence to actually do what I wanted, even at 15 years old, to make, you know, things happen in Cheyenne. Let's see then. Okay, then Brian Cook. Brian Cook, my actual friend, since high school. And I, and you know, he has as many baseball stories as I have skate park stories, and our passion for youth is just crazy high, like, even though we're now over 50 Like, even though we're now over 50, it's just nuts how much we supported it throughout our entire, you know, from two different worlds, but we both supported what we were gonna do. And I classified him as the devil and the angel on my shoulder. Him being the devil, Margie being the angel. I don't know how many times I've heard, Cook, Richard, shut up! I, I love Margie, I'm Brian, and then I'm still gonna beat Jackson at pickleball, for the record, Charles. Okay. And then, my last one, Mr. Tom Seiggrave. Of all the members on council, I feel that I actually knew Tom the least. It wasn't until the last two years. Tom kind of took a weird turn in, back in 2022, where he was kind of like, yeah, I wanted to just do this one more time, but I'm just not really feeling it. And all of a sudden, he got this light. And I classify him as the, he's the visionary of council. This man has amazing ideas. And the way that he, like, I saw a person who really didn't even want to be on city council two years ago, to somebody that became even more active than me. I think Seiggrave has more ordinance changes and resolutions passed than I do. Mine were more social, so they're more controversial, but in regards to economic development and just making the community grow in another way, he is the visionary of council. And I really appreciate the amount of time and work that I've seen over the last two years from this individual. When people would ask me with Brian stepping down on who they should vote for, I did tell people to undervote and, and support Tom Seiggrave, because I viewed him as the visionary for the city of Cheyenne. And even though we don't really know each other that well, I could just see from the last two years that this man literally had the best forward-thinking of, of Cheyenne. And so with that, with all my gripes and everything, and all the complaints for the people that call me Hitler, I brought something for all your complaints. Thank you very much. This is the last time I will introduce myself as Cheyenne City Councilman Richard Johnson.
Is there anybody on the governing body that would like to comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Next item, please.
Expression of appreciation to Mr. Ken Escobell as president of the city council for 2024.
Each year, our governing body, our city council elects their leadership, and this year it was Mr. Escobell. And it's, it's more, you know, you've gotta schedule all the work sessions and, and handle all the business, and Mr. Escobell did that really well this last year. So a gavel serve for you from, from your colleagues to say thank you for a job well done. Mr. Cook, would you like to make the last motion of your career to adjourn this meeting?
I so move.
Mr. Johnson? Second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting, and the last meeting of this governing body, is adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. Cook says he's running behind. You got work to do now. No, you're not on public service, you don't, you gotta go. Fanny's. Didn't bring up that you would kill me slow.
I'm gonna watch.
You're welcome. As a constituent. Thank you, sir. You made me cry.
Jennifer, are we ready? Do you need anything else? Okay. Madam Clerk, are you ready on your end? Judge? Judge Jeffrey? Right here in the middle, sir.
You know, Mr. Mayor, it's always interesting to be on this side of the dais with a judge.
Some of us wouldn't know.
Judges. Are you ready?
Administration of oath of office to Mayor Patrick Collins by the Honorable Justice Kate Fox, Wyoming Supreme Court.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an honor to be here, though. You did not tell me there would be a diatribe, but...
Appreciate you, ma'am. Thank you.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Patrick Collins.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming...
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law...
That I have not knowingly violated any law...
Related to my election...
Related to my election...
Or caused it to be done by others...
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties...
And I will discharge the duties...
Of my office with fidelity.
With fidelity. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Administration of oath of office to newly elected city council members by the Honorable Justice Kate Fox, Wyoming Supreme Court. Ward one, Pete Laborn and Jeff White. Ward two, Dr. Kathy Emmons and Tom Seiggrave. Ward three, Dr. Michelle Aldrich and Mark A. Moody.
Yeah, you gotta get up. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeff White.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming...
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming...
That I have not knowingly violated...
That I have not knowingly violated...
Any law related to my election...
Any law related to my election...
Or caused it to be done by others...
Or caused it to be done by others...
And that I will discharge the duties...
And that I will discharge the duties...
Of my office...
Of my office...
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Welcoming comments?
Thank you very much. I have just a few minutes here, so. Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome to the friends, family, and staff who are here to celebrate the swearing-in of our new governing body members and our appointed department directors. Like to say welcome to Mayor Erickson. I think he was mayor when this building was built, and it's very nice for you to join us here this eve, this morning, sir. Thank you for being here. And also thank you, Justice Fox, for once again administering the oath of office. It's so kind of you to be here to help us celebrate our new administration. Thank you. This is a bittersweet day. We just said goodbye to two great friends and colleagues, and Brian Cook and Richard Johnson. We also said goodbye last week to the, with the retirement of Chris Jones as our city clerk, and Stephanie Boster is our city attorney. And for me, it's been kind of hard emotionally. It is with excitement, though, that we start the new year and the beginning of a new governing body, and that we welcome Dr. Kathy Emmons and Mark Moody as our newest city council members. And we're also pleased to welcome Kylie Soden as our new city clerk and John Brody as our new city attorney. They've been serving our residents and city for years, and they'll be great additions to our leadership team. I also want to thank, just quickly, our departments for the new council member orientations. It's been a great opportunity for our newest city council members to learn about the departments and meet our staffs. We have so much to be proud of, and it was fun to see our departments show it off. I want to take a minute to look back at the past four years, and I'm so proud of that governing body. We work so hard to avoid the chaos that prevents so many governing bodies from being successful. We agreed to avoid using social media to criticize each other and to use it only positively. We stayed away from national social issues and focused our efforts on issues specific to Cheyenne, and it made a difference, and we were able to accomplish much. The governing took on issues that had been talked about for years but went unaddressed. Things like county pocket annexations, downtown parking, storm water management, the remediation of the hitching post, adding gyms for the first time to our indoor recreation, passing a biased crimes ordinance, encouraging housing with UDC development amendments, building new fire stations, three of them, major staff increases in public safety, focusing on pavement management, approving the Thomas Heights flooding solution, improving union labor relations, organ, oversized vehicles, movement on the pump house, fixing the 17th Street lights, scheduling opening the Belvoir Ranch to the public for the first time with new trails, and so much more. Looking forward, I hope this new governing body will make the same commitment to stay focused on Cheyenne-specific issues and to use social media only in a positive way. We proved it works, and our residents expect us to address the challenges our community will face for the next two years. I've shared with many of you the two biggest challenges that I hope we will address in the next two years, and that will be finding new water resources and answering the housing challenge that we face and the WCDAs has quantified. Our friends at the Board of Public Utilities have shared the challenge our water system faces due to the decades-long drought affecting the Colorado River drainage. Cheyenne has robust water resources, but two-thirds of that water come from the Colorado River drainage. We expect our Colorado River water to be called in the near future, resulting in a shortage of up to 7,000 acre feet from our current annual use. We've worked hard over the past four years to find new water resources, and we have some very promising leads, but nothing is finalized. I look back to the past and those who secured our water future with the purchase of the water rights on the Little Snake River. And I want folks to look back at this governing body in the same way. It has to be a top priority for this governing body and the Board of Public Utilities. The WCDAs has shared the challenge we face as a city and state with housing. The Wyoming Business Council has shared the impact housing deficit has on our economy due to the constraint it places on our workforce. I'm encouraged by the interest we are seeing from the private sector in building housing, market rate housing in our community. Many multifamily developments are under construction, and more will break ground soon. And we have developers looking to bring back the 1950s with smaller, single-family homes on smaller lots to give families the opportunity to own their own home. One area we will, we will need to continue focus is building more affordable housing. Everyone deserves a safe place to live, and our goal is to make that housing available at about 30% of their income. We have a bill before the legislature that will help give us more tools to make this effort happen, and I appreciate all the work the governing body has done and hope we can continue to find ways to make affordable housing easier to build in Cheyenne. The city council set some goals over the past few years that I know will make a huge difference in our downtown. The Reed Avenue project, the 15th State Rail Experience, and the restoring of the pump house are all well underway in the planning process. These are huge projects that will leave a lasting legacy and impact. We need to continue to monitor these projects and help find the resources to complete them. The railcars are currently being remediated of asbestos and lead paint, and the target date is the summer of 2026 for their installation on 15th Street. TDSI is creating the construction documents so we can begin the restoration of the pump house. Saving historic buildings for future generations is the right thing to do. And I'm so excited about the Reed Avenue project we will have on the west edge of our downtown. Where houses that have been vacant for decades coming back to life and commercial activity that will result will be transformative. Another goal of the city council is to open the Belvoir Ranch that the city purchased in 2003 for the first time to the public. We currently have over seven miles of trails built on the ranch, and a contract has been awarded to build the trailhead and the access roads. We have work left to do, but we're scheduled to do a ribbon cutting sometime next year. Cheyenne has over 370 miles of roads with 1,400 lane miles. We know roads don't heal themselves. It takes significant maintenance efforts to keep our roads satisfactory and, to get them to a satisfactory level and keep them there. The estimate is it takes about $10 million, $500,000 a year for the next decade to get there. 80% of our fifth penny sales tax is dedicated to road maintenance, and that adds about $7 million a year. So we'll have to continue to prioritize these efforts and find those resources. I would like to share that the voters of Laramie County and Cheyenne have been so wonderful in the resources they've given our governing body. They've supported the fifth and the sixth penny sales tax now for decades. The next six penny sales tax election was projected to happen in this governing body's term, and we will need to work hard to find projects that will benefit our community and the voters will support. Our staff has been working on their priorities, but we also need to reach out to the community to see what projects they have, what their priorities are. And I look forward to those work sessions and community meetings where we share our priorities. An exciting celebration that will happen in this term also, the United States of America will turn 250 years old in 2026, and we've been planning an epic celebration that we hope will last for an entire year. Nathaniel Trulies and a group of volunteers have been collaborating with the state to give our nation a huge local birthday party. And I would like to create some sort of an art piece or something similar that would commemorate this fun experience and occasion. One of the biggest risks I think our community faces is flooding. 1985 showed what Mother Nature can do when she is raging, and our community is still at risk. Our recently passed ordinance will give us the resources to begin to mitigate this risk, but the coming year will require yeoman's work to get the billing and organizational structure installed. This work will save lives and prevent property damage in the future. I love Cheyenne, and I'm so proud to be its mayor. I know some of our residents don't feel the love, and I hope this governing body will work to make sure all our diverse residents feel welcomed in our community. As our economy grows, we will need to welcome folks who look, pray, and love differently if we're to be successful. I know Cheyenne's people to be welcoming, and I would encourage continued conversations to make sure everyone is heard. And last, I want to brag about our department directors that we will be swearing in in just a minute. I love this team and the professionalism they bring to their work. They lead the teams that deliver the services to our residents every day, and I appreciate their willingness to serve our residents and guide their departments. It's an amazing team. So I want to thank you all for coming. I'm very excited about this upcoming new administration, and I really do appreciate everyone coming here to help us celebrate. Thank you. And with that, I would like to call the first meeting of the new governing body to order of January 20, January 6, 2025. Madam Clerk, would you again take the roll?
Dr. Aldrich?
Present.
Mayor Collins?
Present.
Dr. Emmons?
Present.
Mr. Escobell?
Here.
Mr. Laborn?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Present.
Dr. Rennie?
Present.
Mr. Royble?
Here.
Mr. Seiggrave?
Present.
Mr. White?
Present.
All members are present. We do have a quorum.
Wonderful. Will you join me again in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of appointment of city officials pursuant to Title II of the Code of the City of Cheyenne. Charles W. Bloom, Planning and Development Director. Bradley M. Bowen, Assistant City Treasurer, Board of Public Utilities. John A. Brody, City Attorney. Thomas D. Cobb, City Engineer. Mark Francisco, Chief of Cheyenne Police Department. Ronald J. Jeffrey, Juvenile Court Judge. John B. Copper, Chief of Cheyenne Fire Rescue Department. Robin L. Lockman, City Treasurer. Vicky Nemeczek, Director of Public Works. Jason M. Sanchez, Director of Community Recreation and Events. David E. Singleton, Senior Municipal Court Judge. Kylie Soden, City Clerk, Assistant City Treasurer.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Escobell and seconded by Mr. White. As a mayor, I don't get to vote on these appointments, but I will take the vote. Any comments on the appointments?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, through you. I just wanted to say, as the, no longer the only freshman councilperson, I really have appreciated the diligence and the quickness, quick response that I always get whenever I ask a question. I think we have the best employees in our community working for the city of Cheyenne. And while we may not always be able to show that with financial resources, I hope that every single city employee of Cheyenne feels appreciated and...
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Cheyenne.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties of, state your office.
Discharge the duties of the city of Cheyenne.
Of the city of Cheyenne.
Of the city of Cheyenne.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for your willingness to serve the residents of our community. You can do a great job, and I'm looking forward to working with you for the next two years. Thank you. Next item.
Election of city council president for 2025.
Again, as mayor, I don't get to vote on the offices of the city council, but I will take the vote. And at this time, I would ask for any nomination for the office of council president for 25. Mr. Royble?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Mark Rennie.
It's moved by Mr. Royble and seconded by Mr. Seiggrave to elect Mr. Dr. Rennie to the office of president. Are there any comments from the members of the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, through you. I just wanted to say that I don't know that we could elect anyone that has more experience on this council for sure.
That's true.
And I think actually the second in the state now for the most experience, serving on a city council continuously. But it found it really interesting when our former president Escobell noted that when you add the experience elected, in elected office for Dr. Rennie, Scott Royble, Pete Leiborn, and Tom Seiggrave, who will be leading our council this year, that their elected experience actually exceeds that of the entire 31 new legislators entering the Wyoming Legislature next year. So what a, what an impressive group we have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Dr. Rennie as president, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Congratulations, Dr. Rennie.
Thank you. Well done, sir.
At this time, we'll take nominations for the office of council vice president. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Rennie?[1637.65]